Hello.
Hello.
Somebody said we weren't hearing audio, so I'm just making sure the audio is working. We were in, uh, city council's just joining you because we were in executive session for a brief while. It was me that was asking. I can hear everybody now.
Okay, good. Yeah, they are quiet, but, Traya.
Oh goodness, that could change around.
They're doing their work and they're keeping quiet because they knew we weren't in here yet, so thank you for joining us.
Joe, how's your mother doing?
Really no change, um, before Jay, ninety-fourth birthday was the. About an hour and a half, people were in and out and she knew them and they sang happy birthday and she sang along, so it's about as good as it could be.
Well, God bless her, Joe.
I agree. Thank you, John.
All right, so. One thing I've been quite mastered is trying to figure out who from the council is joining, who hasn't.
Mine has my name and I'm joining with my face this time, too.
Counselor Tuttle, ditto.
I see you, counselor. I see Bob, I see Mara, Joe, welcome everybody. There's Ann.
I see Ria.
Hi.
How's it going?
Hi.
All right.
Ria, I like your fan. I probably need to put mine on.
I actually thought I turned it off because I thought it kind of looks like I have a spinning top to my head.
Leave it on. It's good for both of us.
Good, will do.
That's right. That's pretty cool, actually. It's an optical illusion. All right, so I believe we have all the counselors with us. Thank you for joining. Uh, sorry we're late, everyone. Is City Manager Buck here?
I am here.
There he is. Welcome on vacation, everyone from Great North. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, I cannot do the video tonight. I don't have bandwidth enough, so I'm just staying on audio.
Yep, it's gonna be a quick meeting anyway, so I think we're gonna blow through this fairly quickly.
Yeah, Steve, send me a postcard.
Will do, John.
All right.
I didn't know they had internet on Mount Katon.
All right, you can always deliver it personally.
Just a quick aside, it took me five Wi-Fi hotspots in Millinocket before I found one that actually worked.
I'm getting close to having my whole building with that brand-new broadband stuff that you put on the poles, so I'm excited.
Wish they'd put them up here. I'd be more excited to do.
I am super excited. Got the wiring down, now it's just the devices and the testing, so.
All right, I'm gonna put an end to the chit-chat. Lowering the, I'm lowering the gavel. Okay. So, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Tuesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconferencing pursuant to one MRSA subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight, uh, excuse me, eight four one three zero one eight seven seven nine seven and password five four one eight nine nine or via computer at the link provided on the calendar on our website. Uh, members of the public may also commit, uh, submit comments via email to info@sanfridmain.org. And thank you for that, and then we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. Okay, roll call. Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counselor Tuttle.
Present.
Counselor Lanigan.
Present.
Counselor Hurley.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Present.
Hi, my name's Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his Executive Assistant, Ms. LaRica, uh, Ricketts, excuse me. Uh, minutes, let's see, nineteen dash one zero zero nine dot zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session held on August fourth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
So move, Miss Mayor.
Second, please. Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Counselor Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
I believe I wasn't there.
I think you're right. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, carries six to zero. Uh, nineteen dash one zero one zero dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on July twenty first, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
So move, Miss Mayor. Second.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Counselor Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Obey.
Okay, I'm also a yes, carries six to zero. Uh, Mayor's report, um, I don't really think I have anything specific tonight. Lots of, you know, emails and phone calls about various, you know, economic development-related issues, things of that nature, uh, but nothing, nothing really specific to bring up this evening. Any subcommittee reports?
Um, yes, zoning, zoning did meet. Wow, um.
Only a week ago.
Only a week ago? Uh, who was there? Somebody help me out. Luke and Joe, help me out. What, what, what did we talk about?
Design review.
Design review, right. Yeah. Um, and, uh, so, uh, I believe, uh, looking at design review, uh, we then empowered, uh, the city manager uh, uh, discuss, uh, making the, the process more efficient, um, with the planning director. I think that, that was the, uh, consensus when we came out of the, the zoning committee meeting. Uh, if any other members have, uh, anything to add, feel free to do that.
All right, thank you for that. Any other subcommittees?
Mister Mayor, uh, Public Safety met and we had an update on the homeless situation in town. And there had been talk about making it a full-time position, which, uh, according to our city manager, can be done with existing resources, but I think we need further research on that. I didn't know if Ann or Joe would like to, uh, add anything that also, also we discussed.
Uh, I'm happy to, uh, add to that. Thank you, uh, that, you know, the primary, your, your two primary concerns with that staffing position. One is actually having, uh, staff available, um, you know, blue pin staff available and two, of course, the budget, so, um, two rather, rather big things we'll be working on. And then the other item we discussed was, uh, the, um, online reporting program that we'll be rolling now. Uh, it was funded through a grant last year about this time, so I just inquired about an update and that's still in the works with some delays due to COVID, it sounds like, so we expect that we'll see that in, uh, late fall, early winter, so that, that'll get rolled out at that point. I think that was it.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, CEO will turn over to City Manager.
So I have no formal report tonight. Uh, I'm trying to create that remotely. Uh, they've changed our, uh, firewalls, so it recognizes me as a threat. So I can't, I can't access my phones remotely any longer. I talked with Ben Gor, one of our IP officials, was trying to remote into my computer here. Could not resolve the situation, so that report is, is out in cyberspace someplace. But just briefly, uh, the, the make-ready or the, uh, citizen survey as far as broadband is concerned, that RFP is out to six qualified firms. Four have responded favorably. Uh, I do not know the status update on the other two as of yet. Should be getting those results back in quickly and those will be brought forward to the city council for consideration as far as initiating to make a make-ready survey. This is the next step if the city went to pursue, uh, broadband to every home in the city using the post-road model. Make-ready ser-, uh, make-ready survey is a critical piece that we need to complete prior to. Uh, the next thing is the Stent and Trust. We continue to move forward on that. Uh, we've had two legal conferences now with our, uh, attorneys as far as the best mech-, uh, mechanism to acquire such that we can pass a clean, quiet title to the pending developer, uh, as well as utilize that title for a, to obtain a voluntary rapid action uh, response, a VRAP from the main department of DEP. We continue to work on that. We believe we've found the quickest and most viable route for that acquisition in order to obtain. We'll bring that forward as part of the presentation to the city council, uh, as that's pending. I'm also going to be bringing to the city council, uh, a pending memorandum with the Department of Environmental Protection for the VRAP on the property. TRCR Brownsville Consultant has completed the phase two on the property. Uh, there's very little of, of concern there and we've talked with actually the developer taking that cost of the, the minor amount of mitigation that's remaining such as caulking around the windows, um, a few things such as that. Uh, which would be a normal part of the process as far as lead paint and things of that nature for developing a structure of that na-, of that, of that age. The developer has, uh, shown, uh, very strong indication that they would more, they would, they would favorably take that over such that we don't wait the, uh, as much as two-year time process to get that minor amount of work done through EPA. We continue to move forward as far as that trust is concerned. Uh, we also continue to work on the, on the field of solar. Uh, we have a pending quote coming back to us from NextEra. So NextEra, a number of years ago, prior to the state's passage of the omnibus bill for the solar, uh, legislation that's out there currently that allows for community tariff credit. So Nextera, a number of years ago, prior to the state's passage of the omnibus bill for the solar legislation that's out there currently that allows for community tariff credits, Nextera was unable to package a deal for us that was economically viable. So the keynote to that is the state's work that was finally passed on that is very favorable out there for the development of community solar. They're now wanting to quote that on us, quote that to us. Even though we're working with Walden Green Energy on two of those aspects, on two different projects, I still would like to obtain a quote from Nextera. So I've provided them with all of our electric information that goes to our consolidated power purchase agreement. They're working to quote us on that, and I'll bring those back to the council as we continue to move forward. As far as Nextera is concerned, the Rushton Street landfill project continues to move forward very favorably. They're moving forward on the NERPA permit for that. The slow part of the project has been the CGA site, continues to be a nemesis to the city. There's now, we had to break that into two phases. One is a NERPA permit in order to remove the last of the solid waste materials that are sitting within wetland boundaries. We're having to do a NERPA permit in order to remove that, and then, and only then can we implement the remediation part of the process, which would be to scrape about six inches of copper-contaminated soil on certain portions of the site, create an embankment that slopes to the south, seed that over, and then it can be developed solar by Walden Green Energy. Aside from that, I have no, no further updates.
All right, any questions for the city manager?
No.
All right. Well, thank, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, so communications presentations. We have one this evening, nineteen dash nine sixty dot zero one, Keep Maine Healthy Grant Presentation and Update. Is Director Housefield on the phone or via Zoom?
I am here, yes. Just give me a minute while I, I'm doing well, trying to upload these documents here. Let me give you the update on the grant. The, the city was awarded an additional amount of funds towards the COVID awareness program. The total amount that the city has been awarded is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and five and forty cents. This is an additional funding amount in this round B of roughly three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I'm going to bring up the, the budget that was first prepared. The first tranche of money that was received, put in place, six public health educators. And their purpose is to help educate the public related to public spaces and businesses. Those six individuals are hired. They're hired through York County Community Action Corporation. And they are available for the public and businesses to, to do business as normal. So if people are uncomfortable going to a store, or if they have an issue related to going and doing business, they can contact these individuals to try to help the situation. That was the primary. There was additional advertising funds in that first part of money along with purchasing PPE, personal protective equipment like surgical masks for face coverings and also advertising. So we have started the first couple advertisements related to this, these public service announcements. The first one that was done was a public service announcement on why it is important to wear a mask. That was done at Holdsworth Park last Friday. We haven't seen the results yet, but it's something that can be advertised via the PEG channel and also the cable channel, cable channels in, in, in the region. Additionally, a public service announcement was done on the city, the testing site, excuse me, that White York County Community Action Corporation manages at the Nassau Health Center so that people can get testing as well. And again, those will be advertised as, as public service announcements, commercials. And then advertisements, so far, there have been two sets of ads for two weeks advertised in the York Coast Star and also the Durham Daily Democrat. And there will be more to come. The, the next piece of money that was requested, the city requested a total of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in total, awfully close to the, the initial or the amount that has been awarded in total. The DHHS, who is administering this grant, chose to reduce the item two and item four from the, the authorization for funding. That item two was to support elders related to social isolation, loneliness. It was going to have a health educator focused on hoarding and provide some money so that, to facilitate that. Additionally, what was also not funded was some evaluation of the program or, or the activities. The city intended to hire a health survey coordinator, conduct some housing and population characteristics surveying, as well as conducting some health and well-being survey, surveying regionally. So that's what was decided to be funded. And then additionally, in general, the amount was reduced by thirty percent as well. So the, just to run you through, the basis of this grant was primarily about supporting tourism in, in the summer and fall. It is partly about getting back to work, supporting business. We did submit a regional application for a broad area. It's highlighted on this map. And then what was specifically funded by the state was a subcontract to the YMCA to facilitate ten virtual learning sites throughout the region. It seems to be a roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that amount is going to be supporting those ten virtual learning sites. So that would be for adult learning as well as child learning in, in some situations of before, after, and during care to, to help in, in some regards with that recreational need related to parents going back to work, the, trying to address some issues related to elders needing to connect with others and also conduct business, whether it's by, I assume possibly for telemedicine or, or other pieces as well. So that's the update in a nutshell. And if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, any questions for, for this evening?
Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment if I could.
Sure.
I was involved as Anne was in the public service advertisement at Holdsworth Park. And I think Ria did a wonderful job in organizing it. It went well, and I, I think that we did send our message and wanted to thank Ian for doing a good job and securing the amount of money that we got because I think it's gonna help all of us in healthcare for our community in the near future. Ian, good job.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Director Housefield?
No, it's great.
Awesome. Thanks, Ian. We appreciate all the work you've done on our behalf of getting these funds and keeping our community safe and keep it up. Thank you very much. Okay, so next up is public participation. Anyone here to speak in public participation? Quickly do a perusal of the participants, looking for a hands up, or you could just kind of let me know you'd like to speak. Seeing none, we will move forward. Public participation, excuse me, public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following, nineteen dash nine eight nine dot zero one. A public hearing to receive comments on a new marijuana license from LLC 27 Hancock Lane, building number one, Sanford, Maine. I'll, the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? I'm sorry, someone say something?
Yes. Yes, this is Kevon Greenwich speaking for Cana One LLC. Just saying, just here listening and here to answer any questions as necessary.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you very much for joining our meeting. Okay, so anyone else here to speak in, in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Okay, while this gentleman is here, any questions on behalf of this application?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Where actually is Hancock Lane?
So they're.
Good. Near the traffic, near the traffic circle on Main Street, just across the street from the Shaw's complex there. So, and Hancock Lane just goes on into, into the property at the dead end.
Probably where Hancock Lumber used to be.
Exactly. It's the actual Hancock Lumber building.
Okay, thank you for that. And it's one of the designated growth sites that we have established in the community. So that's one of the, I believe it's eight locations around the community. Okay, seeing nothing further on this, I will close the public hearing. Consent agenda. Any issues or concerns related to the consent agenda? Any kind of comments from the council? Otherwise, we're gonna assume the consent agenda is approved?
Yes.
Okay, hearing none. We're gonna declare the consent agenda approved. Thank you. Old business, none. New business, nineteen dash one zero zero eight dash zero one, order to create and approve a recreation advisory board and appoint members as detailed in the community council packet. Excuse me. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Director Grady, you with us this evening?
I am. How are you? I'm doing well. How are you? Good, good. So I don't know how we do this. I guess I can explain a little bit of why we're looking to create the board and then move on from there. That'd be great. Okay, so this is a pretty common thing at a lot of municipal rec departments to, to have a rec advisory board. Our group is looking to kind of meet the needs of the community, be the voice of the community, make recommendations, collaborate with us on projects, promote the department, help in any way possible for any recreational opportunities. So we'd like it to consist of seven members, three serving two-year terms, four serving one-year terms. We're gonna try and meet once a month. They're gonna really be a part of sort of aiding and implementing some of the projects through the Sanford Rec Master Plan. So as you know, we've got some CIP funding this year, so they'll be a big part of that. We're looking forward to that. They, they're gonna help study and recommend methods for financing for these parks and rec projects, maybe some grant opportunities, maybe some fundraising opportunities. They'll look at our rec programming, make suggestions on improvements, changes, additions, special events as well, and then offer insight into the park and rec budget as well. So the only thing I, I did want to mention is the, the only other thing is the advisory board is advisory in nature. So ultimately, final decisions still do fall on the, on the Parks and Rec Director. But I, I really look forward and will value their input, especially as we move forward with a lot of these parks projects.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. In his description of the, the board, he put it as one-year terms. I assume they would be, based on what I'm seeing for the recommendations for the members, it seems like they're two-year terms. But they've stopped, so you're doing a certain number of them every year. For a year. So I think you need to change the charge to two-year terms. It's very common to do what we're doing to stagger them. So, but I think in your charge, it needs to be two-year terms.
On the, on the mission statement with.
Exactly, exactly. I would change that there.
Yep.
Because once we get through this initial setup, it's gonna be, we're gonna be appointing people for two years.
Basically, yeah. So you're gonna treat the one-years as if they've already been here one year.
Exactly.
Got it.
They've been working hard for a year and now they want to be here for a year.
Perfect. All right. Okay, and we, most of people, I'm glad they read their names and, and it's Ria McCoy, Luke Lanigan, Sonia Foy, Claire Thompson, Patrice Cousineau?
Yep.
Did I mention that? Okay, great. Thank you. Anthony Pagano. Michael Perry. So those last folks are for the, the last four with a one-year term, the previous three with a two-year term. Well, actually, they're all two-year, but you know, as far as the expiration. So thank you, folks. I know a bunch of you on the phone are Zoom tonight, so thank you for joining us. We really appreciate you joining this committee and with this board. And we look forward to hearing your input. I think it's awesome that you want to engage and make our parks better. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Two quick things. Can I sign off real quick? One, Sonia, her last name is actually Lockard, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I just want to mention that we had, we had an overwhelming support. We had ten people looking to join, and we just had to whittle it down to seven. We've got a wide range of people. You know, retired person, a lot of volunteers in sports, a lot of volunteers in 4H and church communities and cheer and outdoor enthusiasts. So it's really wide-ranging. I'm really happy with the, with the volunteers we have on the board. So I just wanted to say thank you to them and looking forward to our first meeting in September.
So wearing them out now. So they want to keep doing it.
Well, the first year of my term was so great, I don't even remember it. So.
See, it's easy. You can do it.
Time just flew by. I'm, I'm in the second year of my term, so it's great.
You'll want another two years then.
There you go. Thank you for the opportunity. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you for wanting to do it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could say something briefly.
Counselor Tuttle, sure.
I would agree with Counselor Hurley. I think the two-year terms makes a lot more sense. I know that it's hard enough getting people to volunteer, but I would, I would agree with the, if somebody wants to volunteer two years, I think that makes the most sense, at least from my perspective.
So, you, you know, so I would leave that to Alan to make the necessary changes to the format. But again, I think the folks who signed up for the one-year, it will in fact be one year unless they want to re-up. And the folks going in for two years, obviously, they know what they signed up for. So you can make the adjustments moving forward, Director Grady. But yeah, I would endorse that as well. We can just simply do a friendly amendment to the, the language tonight if everybody's comfortable with that. Awesome. So again, I'm looking at some faces. Thank you for, for hanging in there with us, both this evening, but also, you know, seeking out these positions and doing your thing. So we look forward to some, some, some great action on the, on the park side and some major improvements. So that's gonna be awesome for the community. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Counselor Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. Awesome. Thanks again. Okay, next up, nineteen dash one zero zero two dot zero one, order to review and accept the proposed sales, excuse me, slate of officers as put forward for the Maine Municipal Association MMA Executive Committee and to designate the city manager to cast the ballot on behalf of the Sanford City Council. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Excellent. City Manager Buck, do you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, so this has gone through the normal nomination process whereby the, the nominating committee comprised of current board members gleaned through the applicants as they've been submitted and they select the various positions as posted here tonight. Then there's an opportunity via petition process for people not selected via the nominating process. There were no petitioned positions as of this year. So the slate was moved forward from the nominating committee. So that slate is comprised of, the recommendation is for James Bennett, who's the city manager in Bidderford. He would be the MMA Vice President, the incoming Vice President, which means the subsequent year, if he's elected, the subsequent year, he'll become the President of the MMA Board. I really thought Jim had been President already. I read through his extensive list of boards and committees and such under that. Find that he's served on MMA from ninety-two to ninety-six and two thousand and eighteen to present, but he's not been President, the President before. So just poking fun at Jim, looking at his resume, it's probably the only position that he hasn't held yet. So.
I was gonna say, I thought he did it, too.
I thought he, I thought he did, but I don't, I don't see it listed here. So James Bennett for the incoming Vice President. The next nominee is Robert Butler, Chair of the Board of Selectmen Town of Waldenburg. I do not know Mr. Butler, but he has a wonderful resume in here. Terry Hounds, Select Person, Town of Grand Isle. I do not know Terry either. And Diane Hines, Town Manager, Town of Ledlow and Reed Plantation. I have met Diane in the past, but don't know her extensively. So that is the slate of officers. So that is the slate of officers. There's the four positions. If you so authorize that tonight, I will sign and submit prior to the deadline on this Friday.
Excellent. Any questions on this? Okay, so we have the names. Any questions in regards to the folks on this list? Or concerns? Okay, so to move the slate, we have a motion, we have a second. Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hensler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Thank you for that, Steve. All right, next and lastly, tonight, 19-1011.01. Adoption of a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Week to be signed by the city manager on behalf of the Sanford City Council. Do you have a motion?
Still move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Excellent. So I've been provided a beautiful proclamation in regards to Constitution, Constitution Week, and I'll go ahead and read that this evening. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commence the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designing September 17th, 23rd as Constitution Week. And now, therefore, I, Thomas P. Cody, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Sanford and the State of Maine, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and remembering those, excuse me, that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof, I here to un-sign, set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on, what is the day? August 18th, day of, excuse me, this day of September of the Lord 2020. Obviously, there's some blanks here. So in any case, coming right up, September 17th through 23rd is Constitution Week on behalf of the city council and here in Sanford. Is anyone here on behalf of this item that would like to speak? I know they used to attend our meetings, and that was traditionally the?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Hanselup and I were there when this was first adopted, so we're still around, right, Joe? Yes.
You're the guy that spelled the soda on the document? Was that you?
It was Joe, not me.
Okay, all right.
And it wasn't soda, but I'm not saying anything more.
All right. So, yeah, the folks from the top of the American Revolution typically attend our meeting. And we take a nice photo, but obviously, and unfortunately, we're not able to do that this year. But thank you for all you're doing and helping us remember these important documents. Okay, so I'm assuming there's no questions on this. We'll do a quick roll call. Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hensler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, and that carries seven to zero. And sorry for me butchering the reading of the document. They're always a bit tricky to read. And that concludes the agenda for this evening. Counsel member comments? Counsel Hanselman?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Stackpole?
I will also pass this evening.
Counsel Tuttle?
A couple briefly, Mr. Mayor. We all received the email from Jack McAdam, concerns about the November election, about the folks who work at the polls. And I think that we have to be prepared. I received a call from a number of people about having some type of outdoor receptacle for absentee ballots. I've already talked with Sue Cody about this, and I believe the next public safety meeting, according to Larissa, is going to be on the agenda. So after that meeting, we will be reporting back to the council on our comments. But I really think that we need to encourage people to do absentees. Anything we can do to make it easier for folks to vote is the right thing to do, Mr. Mayor. That's all I'm going to say.
Yes, Larissa and I discussed that this morning. I also obviously received the email as well. So that will be discussed in any other sort of matters relating to the election coming up. So that'll be on the public safety, as Counsel Tuttle mentioned. Okay, anything else? All right, Counsel Lanigan?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, Counsel Hurley?
Just quickly, I've been speaking with Counselor Hanselman about the candidates night. Either Luke or I have been doing it over the last several years, depending on who was on the ballot. Well, this year, we're both going to be on the ballot. So she's agreed to take over, working on it and kind of take on the specific stuff so that I have a proper distance from it. So it doesn't seem like there's any favoritism or anything and keep Luke out of it as well. Just as I work through the details with her, I'm thinking, and if any council has a different opinion, I'm thinking the Performing Arts Center might be the better place to have it, given the space that you can have the candidates spread out more. And I think that the streams that they've been doing of the school board meetings have actually been very good. So I think we'll actually get good sound, good video, so people will be able to appreciate the dialogue. And I just recommended a short while ago to Counsel Hanselman that we do it early October, given the great degree of absentee ballots I think that we're going to see this year. So other than that, if anybody has anything they want to weigh in on, or if anybody wants to assist Counsel Hanselman in putting this together, who's not on the ballot this year, I'm sure she would appreciate the help. It's very easy. I assured her it was so simple. So that's how I convinced her to do it. Anything, that's pretty much what I wanted to mention. I wanted people to know upfront that it is, there is going to be a candidates night, and that Counsel Hanselman will be taking care of logistics this year.
Great. Mr. Mayor, my only concern is about the acoustics because I've, some people called me and complained about sometimes the acoustics haven't been that good there. So I'm hoping we can make sure they are.
Yeah, there definitely is an echo situation there. I've been watching the school committee meetings, and there's a frequent sort of reverb or sort of echo sensation going on in that building. It very well could be just someone's Zoom connection or something like that, maybe something simple. But I'm sure they can do some dry runs and get things sorted out.
If there, and if there are issues with that, and that people really want to have it in the chambers, I think we just have to have strict time limits, like you get to arrive for your event at this time, and then you must leave following it. You can't stay for the other ones because of the face issues.
I think if we can do the performing arts location, that would be ideal because it just, you know, I've been to a couple of different things in the chambers. You realize how quickly that actually fills up. There's not that much space. As big of a room as it is with tables and different things, there's a lot of sort of used up area there. Okay, great. So more to come on that. And thank you, Counsel Hanselman, for taking that on. We really appreciate it. That's an important event for the community for sure.
Do you have any idea who the moderator or moderators might be this year?
I'm going to, I would, I would think Ann would talk to Tammy and Sean again to do that. If anybody has any suggestions, I would get it over to Ann. They, they both enjoy it. I think Tammy likes coming back to the community and likes working with Sean on this event. Pretty much, Counsel Lanigan and I have left 100% of the questions up to them. And I think they do reach out to the public, or there's an ability for the public to suggest some of the questions for the different candidates. It's going to be a big one this year because you're going to have to have the state candidates, the local candidates, and I've been, you know, thinking back and forth whether we want to add the county candidates to it because it does make for a very long evening with the county candidates. So that, I think that can be left up to Tammy and Sean, maybe.
Well, more, maybe we could introduce or invite the ones running for president.
No, thank you.
Right.
Ann and I would agree on that one.
This is a hot ticket. They'd jump all over that.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, what a dream come true.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, Counsel Hurley. Attorney Mayor Hensler?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. I want to thank the many, many people who reached out to me about the Great White Shark sighting in Wells. Thank you for your concerns.
I just assumed I'd let you die that way, so.
Well, that's really nice of you. So I still have all my limbs.
Die doing what you love.
Right. I want to, I, you know, it's interesting. So March 13th was my daughter Paige's last day in the high school, when everybody thought they were going to go back two weeks later, and this would all be over and sorted out. And that obviously came and went, but we're on like, you know, we were to count the weeks way back when, oh, we're on week five, we're on week six, we're on week 11. I think we're on around honestly like week 25 right now since then. And everybody's been kind of hanging in there, and I'm sure there's many parents that are going through this as well. And, you know, so we're sending them both off to college, and I wish them well. We've had the opportunity to have them both home, both my daughters home, for a very, very extended amount of time and completely unexpected. So that was, that was, that was a blessing in a lot of ways. We'll probably never be able to do that again, or hopefully not in these situations anyway. So I want to wish them well when they go off to school, and hopefully everybody's safe and happy when they get there. And all the other college kids that go off on their adventure around the community, I hope that you get to stay. And I hope everybody's doing the right things. And, you know, hopefully, it's all going to work out. So just do the right things, you know, wear your masks, wash your hands, be safe, think about your parents. Worrying about you every day. So I want to thank those guys and let them know I love them, and we appreciated them, you know, sort of dealing with mom and dad for an extended amount of time. So with that, that's, that's what I had. Future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a resident call me about some concerns with the site behind Oakdale Cemetery growing and some residents not feeling comfortable walking and enjoying their neighborhood. I know it's a situation that's, you know, not easily fixable, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention because I know Officer Small is really good with communication with them, and hopefully we can get everybody happy again.
Excellent. I think there's something that probably would be discussed under public safety.
I believe so.
Okay. I can say that the number of occupants there is actually starting to decrease. And they're doing the scheduling, because they gave authorization of that. Eric Small's coordinating with Public Works to do a cleanup day out there. So collecting trash and other refuse and bringing that out, and we'll get that over to the transfer station and disposed of properly.
Is there any work going on over in Bougie Lane down there? There was a lot of, when I went down with my ride with him, there was a lot of trash down there too.
There actually is. I'll be bringing that forward under property sub. There is, there is an owner of land on both sides of Bougie Lane. Would like to do a discontinuance and actually fence that property off for development there.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other future agenda items? All right, short meeting tonight. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. So I want to thank especially the folks who are going to be on the Parks and Rec Board. Thank you for joining us. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you in the early part of September.
Good night.
Evening, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.